Roll call. Mr. Curicat here. Mr. Simpson here. Mr. Simeone, Pat, Diego's here. We have a oral. Uh, approval of agenda. Motion to approve. A motion, go ahead, second.
Second.
Antonio?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Jared Lloyd?
Yes.
Approval of minutes, River Meeting, August twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen. June, I'm sorry. June.
Yeah.
I was here on the twenty-fifth. Got a motion to approve?
Second.
A second. Antonio?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
You were here, right?
Yep.
Pass. Okay, uh, commission to adjourn as Board of County Commission and reconvene as Board of Finance. Make motion to adjourn as Board of County Commission and reconvene as Board of Finance. Motion got a second by Commissioner Simpson, Lloyd, here, Pat?
Yes.
Don't give.
Yes.
Okay, final budget, resolution fourteen dash twenty-one. What recommendation?
Well, commissioners, obviously we did a nice little presentation for you for preliminary budget and explained a lot of the work that had been put into it. Well, obviously none of that has changed. Um, we have made a few changes to that budget to what you're seeing tonight. And so that was why we decided not to waste your time with another presentation because not much has changed.
And the preliminary, that preliminary budget passed, uh, Santa Fe's approval?
Yes, it did.
Mr. Chairman, just some of the things on preliminary budget have changed to what you would be approving at Board of Finance would. Uh, as we had said to you prior, um, there would be an increase in salaries at the Sheriff's Department, uh, and that would reflect, uh, an increase in, from the preliminary, they had that and then if they go to the final budget, it would increase, uh, a small increase in the salaries in the Road Department that I visited with you about last night in email. Um, the additional funding, should you fund additional community service activities at the regular county meeting tonight, we would have, we would have enough to be able to put back in there. Um, if you decide not to, then it would just, it would just stay the same. There was an increase in, uh, in the insurance rates, uh, the health insurance rates, um, and, uh, and then the new voting machines, the clerk came in, uh, got him all by new state voting machines and that's about, it's just about seventy-six hundred dollars. The, the biggest difference, uh, Mr. Chairman and commissioners is, is the increase to expenditures and purchases that cross fiscal years. And all that is, is an in and out. In other words, we had it budgeted for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen fiscal year. Uh, and it did not get in and or approved and paid prior to June thirtieth or fourteenth. So the money wasn't covered. But the cash flow comes over to two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, and then we take the expenditure out of there. And so, though, that, that's, that's a big number only because, but it's a push. The revenue comes with it, expenses come with it. And so, the total is about a hundred forty-six thousand dollars. Uh, the biggest thing, as I said, was the difference in, in that push and, and that's the only, um, there was a, there was a total revenue increase, though, seven hundred two thousand dollars, um, to, to, to help offset that. The biggest one, I think, we discussed was the bill payment, um, that we had budgeted originally, uh, one point four million, where you outlined the budget of one point four, and, uh, when a payment came in, it's one point eight this year.
Go ahead, Jared.
Sure. Um, Joseph, were there changes to the county clerk's, or the vice coordinator's position? Or do we still have the one position? Or what's the status of?
No, there hasn't been any changes, we've just been stepping in the clerk's office. Uh, we were still pretty good for being able to hire BRCs to offset that after election time.
So, there won't be hiring of any BRCs?
No, no, there will be, yes, we'll be able to get hired for BRCs.
So if we're kind of reverting back to the past practice of hiring those and not a single person?
For their time being, yes.
And that's only in the new budget?
Yes.
Okay, because I did have a lot of, well, not a lot, but I have some question phrases about that. It's difficult to hire those people in the first place, so to, to not be able to count them in. They'll be paper or services or something like that.
Right, no, I definitely, we want to be able to maintain services on, on our plans as we have in the past.
Anybody else?
Well, we already have future foundation included in some of the budget, right? We are still, we have some questions out there, we do have funds available. We needed to take a look at, we had some questions on that. We made a phone call and put a phone call into, um, Simeone to find out if we need some clarification. But, yeah, the funds are there to, to take care of it. She may be here tonight, we have to have questions up during the county commission meetings. The funds are here available.
Antonio? At that point, what, uh, is the wishes of this commission? I'm going to make the motion to approve the final budget resolution fourteen dash twenty-one with any, um, adjustments that need to be necessary in the future. That would be allowed to be considered. I got a motion, go ahead, a second. Second. Antonio?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Pat?
Lloyd?
Monthly voucher report.
Have you got some questions on that? I addressed them, Joseph. People look at it.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just want to clarify that, um, my travel to, uh, the rural action caucus meeting in Washington City, all these, uh, charges will be reimbursed by the committee itself. So those charges will see that being reimbursed by the committee. Now, those other ones, will they be reimbursed by what, how they count in the DOD? What's the last one? These ones are from Washington City. All these.
Chair.
How often do we buy clothing for inmates? And we just give them a special file for, for instance? Here for Harvard. Harvard has a whole page on page forty-three.
I'm assuming, Joseph, those, uh, bloodshed, the voices for, for prisoners, do they go billed to, or is that all inclusive in the day, in the pay, that they pay us?
What do you refer to, pharmaceutical?
Oh, that, we did reimburse from the county on any, uh, medical. We billed, we billed bloodshed county for any payment. What reimburses the fifteen?
Yes, any of the medical and a personal, the housing, um, and pharmaceutical that, that we have to incur because of another county's, it makes those get billed back to the home county.
And the clothing?
No, clothing is, is our expense. And as far as I understand, the clothing is done as a per need basis. And the warden goes around and they see that they've got clothing that is in, uh, you know, disrepair or on a sorry show, they're wearing it, they may replace it at that point.
This is about a hundred thirty-one thousand dollars in concrete expenses. It includes clothing and furniture.
Sorry, speaker.
There's about a hundred thirty-one thousand of the expense there. It all includes, say, that it's got medical, clothing, pharmaceutical. Eighteen forty-four dollars, like four, page four, or four, three.
Pharmaceutical we are reimbursing. Any other questions? No. Pat?
I mean, no.
Walter?
No.
Antonio? Tries your report.
Good evening, commissioners. I have the distribution report for the month of January two thousand and twenty. Um, the state got four thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. Can you hear me?
Uh, if you're talking to that, I think I can hear you.
The state got four thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. The county got thirty-two thousand six hundred forty-six thirty-eight. The schools got thirty-seven thousand one sixty oh eight. The college got two thousand six hundred thirty-four, thirty-four dollars and sixty cents. The city got, City of Grants got six thousand three hundred fourteen ninety-five. The Village of Malanga nine, nine hundred ninety-two dollars and forty cents. Kimado School District, District got one oh one oh seven. Sebola General Hospital got thirteen thousand four hundred ten dollars and eighty-five cents. Flood District got six hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty cents. Lava got seven hundred fifty-five dollars and seven, seventeen cents. Total distribution was ninety-nine thousand one hundred fifty-six thirty-one. As far as the investment report, um, Dolores got two different reports and she's on vacation. She said she's sorry, she couldn't be here tonight, but she's on vacation with her grandson. But she said that nothing's changed as far as last month, the month before. Uh, you can verify that with Joseph, but everything's still the same. But she will have two investment reports for you next month. And as far as collections of taxes, we sent out our delinquent letters, uh, June thirtieth, and we have been receiving a lot of pocket tax collections. It's like, um, tax season over again, but we will have a percentage next month of what was collected within the month of July.
Take notice to the people that worked in here behind, having a chance to.
Yes. Yes, we went to a conference, during the winter conference, they went ahead and decided that we can take partial payments. They don't have to be the whole three years and then the state cost. We can take a payment of the one twenty-five, and if it's on their account, they're three years behind. We can take the payment of one twenty-five state cost and the eleven, two thousand eleven year, and then we can work with the eleven, I mean, the twelve and the thirteen. So yes, we can take partial payments again.
Any questions, Jonah?
Ben, thank you very much. Um, we'll, we'll look forward to the investment report. Okay, rentals received.
So we received, uh, six, seven thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents, Joseph. And that's from Smiths and World Finance. It hasn't changed since, uh, all year.
Now, I mean, uh, we got a, a request for a renewal of world finance to continue their lease for another year, so maybe we'll be with this.
Financial statement. So this closes out two thousand fourteen, fifteen, fourteen?
I'd save for the adjustments we have. Save for the adjustments we have later, those are to, and not to be, I guess, as you made earlier.
Chairman, the only question I have is, uh, just, I guess, for information purposes, on the emergency management program. I don't think he's here, but, uh, are we facing a lot of incidents where we're having to close that budget and do we have enough money to cover any further instances?
Yes, we do have enough money to cover the instances. We, uh, we do, um, emergency management does get a lot of money through the state for that kind of thing. We get a portion of our fire fund distribution goes to emergency management as well as a couple of other grants. So we have that available to us as well as the portion the county provides for the rest of the budget.
Any flooding or plumbing or tunneling?
Not that I'm aware of. I know we had a, a little bit of flooding here with the last rain that was, um, was handled by the fire department. Blue water, they had some flooding up that way. Nothing major, spark like that.
Roll call. Antonio?
Yes.
Walter? There. Lloyd? Here. Pat? Here. Uh, please stand for pleasure, please. The decisions to defy of majesty's, of the government, and to the republic, which is standing, one nation, say, under God, in the middle of this all, delivered to the justice for all. Welcome to this, please.
Dear Father, I pray that you, uh, watch this county and watch us as we make decisions tonight. And we do get rain, but we don't get it too quickly and too fast. If it comes in less and slower than we need it, take care of those people who need, in their name we pray.
Approval agenda. Motion to approve. Second. Lloyd? Yes. Walter?
Yep.
Antonio? Approval of minutes, June twenty-fifth, River Meeting, May fifth, Special Meeting, June sixth, Special Meeting, and June thirteenth, Special Meeting, five thousand four. Make a motion. A motion to approve? Um, before we approve, there needs to be a correction on item eight. Minutes. Second, sentence there. On what means that first of the twenty-fifth, on the presentations? I would hear that needs to be corrected. It states that the last two county commissioners that were hired, I'm not sure that that's referred. Are managers they manage? All the managers. That. Right. That being asserted. Any other corrections? Any others? Do we have a motion? A motion to have second? Second. A second. Lloyd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Uh, yes, on everything except you, for a bit, I wasn't here.
Antonio? All right, commission to adjourn as Board of County Commission and reconvene as Indigent Hospital Claims Board. Make the motion, uh, make the motion to adjourn as Board of County Commission and reconvene as the Indigent Hospital Claims Board. Second. What's the deal, you notice real balances here? We have an issue going on with the state on indigent that we discussed at length a day with Joseph and Glenn on what the state is actually, their, their line item vetoed the governor had, uh, put into play. So that is still up in the air, um, on what needs to happen there. So, we've been dealing with association of counties, uh, and, okay, what's going to happen here? You know, with Obamacare. If that indeed happens, then the commission fund goes by the wayside and all that we do. They'll be paying for, for funerals. We are still collecting the dollars, okay? But, uh, we, we still don't have full what's happening. And we've been in dialogue, of course, ones back and forth with the Senate. We're not by ourselves. Every state, every county, every county in the state is in the same, same, same. So it's very apparent you don't have to approve anything of anybody. Other than, other than, other than partners and, and X-ray associates? I'll make a motion to approve what's under the camp.
Just a question for Joseph. How much funds, do we have enough funds to last for how long?
Uh, it really depends on what kind of expenditures we see, given the, the amount that the state's wanting to collect for, uh, for their healthcare safety net. Um, it's kind of looking for a real, well, how. Um, but obviously with, um, with the changes, that we shouldn't have as many claims because people should be covered under, uh, either some insurance or under Medicare Act. So it's really, until we find out what's going to happen to the state, it's even hard to answer that question.
We have two hundred sixty, we have two hundred sixty thousand dollars and they're requesting us to reimburse the state. I don't think any county is writing a check, so.
Oh, so we're supposed to send that back to the state?
Yeah, but I don't know what, what's going on with, with that whole ordeal. And they have, they're having, they're having issues with that line item vetoed that the governor imposed. So we don't know what's going on. Okay. They can set up. What a second. Make that motion second. Paul? Yes. Walter? Yes. Boyd?
Yes.
All right, I have a motion to. The chairman? IHS Board and reconvene as Board of County Commission. I'll make the motion to the fairness, Indigent Hospital Claims Board. Second.
Reconvene as the county commission.
We have a second. Yeah. Antonio?
Yes.
Walter? Pat? Yeah. Boyd? Okay, sheriff, monthly, uh, reports, sheriff report, sheriff department, uh, do you have any fun you? Uh, this is for June and then June thirtieth. So we don't have the numbers for July yet on the grand plan of the red bike rally. Uh, did you notice anything out of the ordinary at the bike rally, uh, this year?
I think newspapers said it all. Less, less and less. I don't think there was any changes from the year before. There actually probably was less, we didn't have any issues or problems or anything major. No, they didn't count it, it was the same.
Any questions for the sheriff, uh, commission?
Are you happy with the budget adjustment pertaining to salaries at the department or retention?
Haven't seen the finished product, but Bob and I talked, talked about it. And, uh, as it stands on paper, I think that I'd like to thank the chairman and the commission. on paper, I think that I'd like to thank the chairman and the commission for doing the question. I think that it's gonna go a long ways in keeping the staff that we currently have and be able to build the sheriff's office more.
Now, we can't afford to lose officers to the city after we've trained them and we have an investment.
Well, there's still part of our community that did it not, but in fact, at least keeps the experience, you know, the most experienced ones on order, you know, applied the wire to these counties.
And in talking to Bob and some of the commissioners, they're staying in the county. Fact of the matter is, is we're taking officers, we're training them, and that's really not the bad part about it. The bad part about it is, is officers with no experience going onto the street are apt to make more mistakes than those officers that have experience.
But you have to understand, I realize you're a large portion of this county in grants, but there's still other communities that are not, the city of Grants does not represent.
And that's correct.
And so you have the aligners, whether it be Laguna, Cuero, San Mateo, of Bluewater, you know, but these, those people need to have adequate representation.
And I'd like to be able to put quality officers out there. We do have quality officers at the sheriff's office. We just want to be able to maintain that and be able to have them out there and not worry daily that because of inexperience, they're gonna cause lawsuits where we can in the end, anyhow. So, thank you.
Any other questions for the sheriff?
Where are we standing, not staff right now? We're down one position and we're currently going through physical fitness assessments, uh, any interviews and whatnot. I would say take a couple more weeks and we'll be able to replace that one position. We had the two positions that we lost. We gained a position with a certified officer with over eight years of law enforcement experience, was local, and so we did well in that position.
Chairman, I was just wondering, it seems like there's kind of a friendly competition regarding salaries being paid, adjustments that were being paid. Now, in order for that not to continue, I mean, we're losing ourselves really out of our budget if we keep playing that game. Is there a way that maybe we can set kind of one to partnership with the city and if there is an increase where maybe bonuses being allowed by one agency, then automated bonuses would be generated in the other agency? So, we don't start trading law enforcement officers because of bonuses being offered by one other agency, but we kind of go hand in hand and offer the same basically salary package to those officers. Now, if they wanna leave on their own accord, if they feel that the other agency is a better agency for them, I see no problem them leaving, but to basically strictly on maybe the bonuses that been offered by one agency as opposed to the other, I think that's gonna really come into a, uh, a situation where maybe one cannot meet those kind of bonuses. But, but I think it's, I think it's good competition, but at the same time, it's, we're talking about, you know, personnel that serve basically the same area. And if officers are gonna be leaving because of bonuses that are being offered, I'd like to see both the county and the city both do it at the same time. If one offers bonuses, then I think the other one must should too. And allow the officers, if they want to change or do different agency, then allow them to, but not based on bonuses or the money's offered.
I don't know if you've looked at it from commissioner, but we're not offering bonuses, we're just putting up a pay scale to where at least it's competitive or at least we're gonna stay. We're not really giving any bonuses to stay, but that...
No, we're not.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Mr. Hubble, you're ac... Mr. Hubble, you're correct, and there, there is no friendly competition. I don't believe in that. I believe that Spola County has been the lowest in pay scale for many years, and I think with what you've done, gentlemen, is you've put us at the same level or just beyond where we should, where everybody else is. We're not offering any bonuses, we're just paying our employees a fair market value for this area. Whereas before, through the eight years that I've been administrated, the sheriff of the sheriff's office, you as commissioners have continuously brought us to where we need to be. I believe that this budget that you approved today has put it, put the sheriff's office where we need to be. And as far as bonuses, I don't believe that it's necessary to have a bonus. My staff agrees, the commission is supporting it, the sheriff is supporting it, and we're finally in a position where we need to be, where we should be.
Any other questions?
Well, I just wanna comment on something else here for the Blue Water Lake hearings that they were having here pertaining to Blue Water Lake work. They were talking about McKinley County and how the sheriff's department helped on that lake and then pulls over. I guess you guys don't have commissions with McKinley County or Ramon, the group anymore? Is that something that is clear?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hubble, you, the associate, there's more to it than just commissioning. The association of counties, and I'm not sure that any of you are aware of this, but there have been commissions that were issued to either other agencies or other tribal entities that resulted in major lawsuits for different counties within the association. Therefore, through my correspondence with them, they were, it was their advice that we not commission other agencies simply because of liability factor. Because I have no control over anybody that I commission outside of my, my deputies, my staff. I can't direct them into what they're gonna do and what they're not gonna do. I can't take action, administrative action over them. Therefore, they find that it's, it's not a good idea to do that. It's still going into litigation with the association. I believe it was...
Santa Fe.
Santa Fe County and another county.
Zia Wibb.
Zia or Tzusuki? Tzusuki. And so, that's the reason that we're not cross-commissioned. I have not cross-commissioned anyone. I have very few cross-commissions out there. Those that are cross-commissioned, federal officer with forest service, I have a number of cross-commissions with the city of Grants, so that's it.
So, well, it was brought to my attention because, you know, Blue Water Lake is McKinley and Spola County, so, so when they do call up, it's, it's Spola County that shows up for an incident, but then right, right across in a certain area, it's McKinley County and it becomes an issue.
They could be the center of a street on the north side of Blue Water Lake or that those jurisdictions are so close. Part of one village or part of the village will be in Spola County. The highway, the roadway separates Spola County.
And there was residents that had that concern also.
I would love to be able to assist them. Unfortunately, right now, the associate, the association of counties and our insurance pool or carrier is advising against it.
There was some illegal dumping is what they were concerned about.
Certainly we'll respond. That's not the issue that we have to respond to. We respond in McKinley County, we respond within the city of Grants, Village of Milwaukee, wherever it's necessary. We'll do that and stop whatever's going on and we'll contact the agency or the department that should be there. If it's outside Spola County, the appropriate agency would be there.
Well, I, I just, last time we had a meeting or I had met with you or maybe two or three years ago, we, we had understood that there was a commission, an agreement between, you know, certain entities and I didn't know that it is.
And we, I have had commissions out there and I still have a few, very current few, not a whole lot. And the reasoning behind it is because I don't have the authority if they work for another entity, it's maybe...
Takes sense.
To do anything as far as sanctions or tell them how they need to do their job.
Or they're gonna, they're trying to figure out what to do there.
Right now, it's in the middle of litigation and we're just waiting.
Do you want to thank him or not? Yeah? Is your on that board?
Me.
The board you're talking about, chairman?
Well, I thought it was on that one, that question.
Well, it's part of the law enforcement contention advisory committee and I am on that board of the association.
I'm on association of county board. I represent the county, association of counties, and that's why I'm impressed with what he's talking about. But I do, I do not, I'm not sitting on the board with the law enforcement affiliate and, and they have a representative that sits on the board with us, but that's, that is going through legal, that's going through risk management and that's where that's all coming from.
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, we have a pension center report, the daily average in June was 260 inmates. Uh, May was 251. We are pretty close to capacity, if I'm not mistaken, am I right, Joseph?
That's correct.
I think it's like 264. 200, 200,951 dollars collected in, in June?
Yes, sir.
Can you have your grid down there on entities and...
What is our rate per day? Is it 50 dollars?
Averaging, it all depends. The city of Grants is 52, Village of Malan is 54, US Marshal was 50, Supcoros 54, bottom line, Briston, 54, it's Fort Talis County, and that's 57 dollars a day. And... And reimburse for transports. Any questions on that? Right now, we are smack dab in the middle of chipping the paving seasons. We've still got a full crew working on the real sand all day, but we also have a full crew. And we've got a good jump on monsoons as far as getting, we're on, we're on schedule to do 20 miles of paving this year. And I've been in touch with Gary and he's having a rough time, but he thinks that he's gonna be to schedule with all of our contracts, you know, our personal contracts with the state. Any questions? Okay, moving on. Public comment?
For the record, my name is Matt Allen. I operate Mount Taylor Manufacturing. I, I need to request a quick favor from you. I know the first line of public comments is that I can only provide comment on this regarding any agenda item. I've got just a quick item to go over that is gonna be a...
Can you speak into your mic, please? Or can I...
Let's do it this way. Is that better? No, that's too low. You can have your knees. I'm requesting a favor because it states that I, I need to speak or, I'm limited to speaking about something that was on the agenda already, and I would like to request the favor of being able to go over a quick resolution passed by the city of Grants. My goal is to request that the county adopt a resolution somewhat like this one, which I'm happy to work with you to draft. I can read this very quickly or I can submit it to the county clerk so that she can copy it for you.
We have a copy of it. We have, we're working on it as you speak.
Terrific.
We've met with the mayor and we, if I'm not mistaken, we had issued a one prior last year and we're all, and we're on the same page with the community.
Terrific. One thing I want to request of, of my friend, Commissioner Felipe, is that if he would do all he can to let our, our tribal brothers know that if Mount Taylor is turned into a wilderness area, this isn't gonna limit access for non-native people, it's gonna limit access for everybody. It, it shuts down the mountain. The very young, the very old, people who wanna collect or do ceremonials, we're done. And so, one of my concerns basically comes to education and making sure that our, our friends, our neighbors from Laguna and Akama and Navajo, et cetera, are aware of the implications for this for the tribes as well. It's, it's a devastating blow to our community if this is passed and encourage everyone to get involved.
Well, I've made a point to contact our legislature, legislators in Washington, that we have public lands that the public does not have access to. Okay? You got, and so what good is it to be owned by all of us if we don't have access to part of these, you know?
That's, that's all I have and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
My name is Ronnie Pines. I just would like to echo Matt's comments in hoping that our commissioners will be proactive and evolve and I'm glad to hear that you guys are already on board with this. There is a meeting, I don't know the date, and you do sometime in the latter part of August, first part of September, and it will be a follow-up, uh, meeting. I assume they're gonna show and tell, present the possibility of some of the areas around Mount Taylor being classified as wilderness. And as stated, this will be possibly in a lot of ways, very harmful to all of our community in many ways. So, I appreciate your time and attention into this matter and thank you for your time.
Yeah, Ronnie, Ronnie, and we, I met with Mr. Pierce, our Senate Congressman Pierce, and I have my staff trying to locate the letter that we, or the resolution that we had passed in the past to, and we also, we told him that we would be sending a letter to Washington, to our delegates of the, in, in what we feel is, and justice to our community.
We, uh, we have a copy of the resolution, Ronnie, but it was too late to get it on the agenda at the time. So, we are working on it, probably next meeting, probably.
Well, one of my concerns was, is there were about 250 people at the last meeting. I was very, very surprised at that turnout and, but honestly, I'm not gonna speak for the force service, but his comments and what I've heard them say, I think they were very shocked to see that kinda turnout. And I just wanted, I couldn't see who was there, it's so that many people. So, I don't know if any of you were able to make that meeting, but I came away with a lot of, a whole different look from Native American peoples at the same table I did and I was very, very impressed with what they said and how, uh, in regards to the force service not fixing something that's not broken. And they did not see the need for a, a long another list of restraints, restrictions and laws requirements. So, if we can get on the same page, this similar circumstance happened, as I understand, in Silver City. There were about a thousand people showed up, they had a rally, it was peaceful, I don't think they throw rocks or anything or call names, but, but Mr. Pierce was there and he was very visible and very vocal about opposing force service efforts to do similar changes there. Thank you, appreciate you all.
He did ask us to do the resolution, you know?
Okay.
I, forgive me, I overlooked one thing. It's more than just the wilderness plan and I want to draw your attention that this, this forest plan revision also contains verbiage from the Autobots Society pressuring Forest Service to shut down all forest restoration harvesting from, I believe it's April fifteenth to August first, which would mean that I have to close our company for three and a half months of the year and then try to reopen and go back to work. And so there's other language within that document that needs to be studied and, and if you can include in your resolution, things that call for some common sense, quite frankly. And at any time, please call me at the mail, I can fill you in on, on some of the darker verbiage in that thing that is really bad for us.
That's jobs. Well, yeah, and if we think we're going to look at it very closely and, and.
Should, should that pass Commissioner Michael, we will close. There's, there's no way to operate a business like that.
I understand and we're in total agreement with you.
Thank you very much.
We've been very supportive of what's going on, going on in the Zunis and I've tried to get it expanded into the, into what's going on on Taylor. If we do not take care of our forests and, we've got some different problems. Thank you.
My name is Randy Waters. Thank you for giving me just a minute. I want to say that we're pleased with what I've heard from Commissioner Zune. And, you know, just to give you food for thought, you know, we have well over centuries worth of multiple use on Mount Taylor. Those uses are all defensible, they're all justifiable, they're all meaningful to some segment of our society. If you look at the way that use is portrayed in terms of, of the big picture, it represents every demographic that you can possibly look at in our society, in this county and points well beyond. So I want to congratulate you and, and tell you that we are pleased to hear your tentative response to this issue, it's a big one. You know, the, by its very definition, the term public service requires a couple of things. It requires that you have the capacity to recognize the problem, understand the effects and potential impacts associated with that problem on your constituency, but it also requires that you have the capacity to be in touch with your constituency. And by this response, it shows that you, that you are on the right path to doing so. So I want to congratulate you with that and I want to remind you that, you know, this is a good thing. You were all elected to this position because people believe that you have the capacity to do all of those things. So thank you for your efforts and your continuing attention.
Thank you. Anybody else to address the mission? Okay. We have a presentation from Devin Williams from our Northwest Cog. Does a good job for Grants, Villan, Malan and Sevola County. Looking forward to your presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman of the Commission. My name is the record, Devin Williams, Deputy Director at the Council of Representatives. I just have my hand down. Try to keep this short. I've given this presentation three times in two days, so I'll get better, I'll get it shorter. I also gave today our, our annual luncheon, our board meeting today, and I know many people, I already heard it once today. So basically I'm here to present on behalf of the state, they are, they are updating and revising their long-range multi-mobile transportation plan. It's called the 2040 statewide transportation plan. It's basically a requirement under the new federal highway bill, APP 21, as we refer to it kindly. Each state has to have one of these and basically lay out strategies and policies of how they're going to spend federal, state money, how they're going to prioritize those funds going out. So this plan acts as the guide for, for that process. Again, their purpose of doing this, the way that they want it to be is very visionary. They want to look out for 2040, really get a sense of what is coming down the road in terms of technology. Travel today may be a lot different than 2040. They want the process to be transparent, predictable, they want funding to go in certain places over and over again so that people know how, how their basic priorities. Everything has to be data-driven and performance-based. That's, that's kind of the buzzwords that I'm hearing. Basically this will create a strategic framework for the state. The plan really needs to be not just roads and bridges, but it needs to be multi-mobile, so all types of transportation from air to biking, hiking, walking, pogo sticking, however you travel, they need to figure out strategies around that transportation. Plan really needs to, to not just take urban concerns, but also rural concerns. So they, they, APP 21 sets out seven national priorities, performance goals. They're basically safety, maintaining infrastructure, keeping it a state-of-the-art, reducing traffic congestion, improving the system or lock reliability and efficiency, improving freight movement, including economic development, protecting the environment, reducing delays in product delivery. So what we've been doing, council of governments along with the state duty is our regional transportation planning organization, the RTPO, has created a working group, there's a list in that packet for you, of people from different sectors, different modes of transportation. We've got them together, we've had two meetings talking about ideas. This is really just a roadshow to let policy officials know what's going on, how to access the process. So there's a website, NewMexicoTransportationPlan.com, that accepts comments from all stakeholders in the state. And then there's a comment sheet on the back of your one pager that can be filled out and sent into RTPO, the director of the state. So we're in the beginning process of kind of evaluating existing conditions and coming up with strategies. DOT really wants to know what strategic moves they can make to improve transportation in this region and Sevola County. So that's what they're really looking for. We've done some public input, like I said, our working group has met, there's a number of statewide working groups on different, there's a statewide working group on rail infrastructure, for instance, that have been kind of in their sector defining what their goals are. But Northwest, we've been talking a lot, things that have risen to the top are inter-jurisdictional coordination, that's a big issue in Northwest New Mexico. Transportation investments that lead directly to economic development. People feel that we shouldn't just pave roads nowhere kind of deal, but if we have strategic economic industrial parks or areas that we're trying to develop, that's where the investment in transportation infrastructure needs to go. There's also a lot of talk in Northwest New Mexico about rail line expansion. There's a feasibility study looking at new rail off of the transit online, Farumpin. There's a number of rail spurs and industrial parks with rail service that are being developed in Northwest New Mexico currently. There's also a need not just for public transportation, so for coordinated public transportation. Example of that, Galveston, we have a boat express that brings people into Gallup. Then we have a Gallup Express system that's supposed to get people through Gallup, but those schedules aren't coordinated sometimes. So we're trying to do a better job of coordinating the public transportation and also make sure it's getting people to the jobs now that we have created. Last thing is unpaid roadways, which Chairman, you just talked about doing twenty miles a year. School bus routes are our major issue, making sure we can get school kids to the classroom. So those are some of the comments that we've been getting through the process. So again, there's a number of ways to get involved, to get comments in, not just for policy officials, but all stakeholders. And then I just wanted to briefly set your attention on this flow chart. As we're doing planning, we're also looking for projects and the RTPO has been charged by the DOT to do a major call for projects in fall. We're going to probably announce that call on September first and collect those by the end of October. So anything from a safety project to a trails project to a rail project, anything transportation, we'll be collecting that kind of project specific input. So that's a great way to take your annual budget, that planning process, infrastructure capital improvement planning process, and take the transportation priorities out of that and really get those into the harbor. I also included the form that kind of starts that conversation, which is the project feasibility form. So that is the form that has been submitted. So anytime from now to the end of October, as things come up, especially seasonal issues like that, washouts, et cetera, we'll, we'll be coordinating that through our office with the district and with the OT. So with that exception.
Questions? That's not at our expense. When they're talking about our highway department, that's a different story. Now, Burlington Northern, if you see those, all those trains, guess what? They're putting money in their pocket and they need to put back into their, put back into their. And in fact, and yeah, and you're right, and you're right. And I don't know what's going to happen when, when federal government's subsidizing Amtrak. You're going to see some, I mean, right now, Burlington Northern and the rest of those rails actually hate them because it hinders their ability to get from point A to point B, whether it be Chicago, LA or whatever. Keep it open just in case the residents want to start rioting crazy during the campaign, put them on rail. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you for the good job and do the person. Okay, new business, resolution fourteen dash twenty, budget adjustment, action being taken, okay? You got it.
I know these are just a few end-of-year adjustments to help close out a few things that we had to adjust for additional expenditures. One thing I do want to make note of is that we're transitioning rural addressing from being a separate department, our fund back into the general fund. It's just a little bit cleaner that way and so we're transferring the remainder of that fund back. So like I said, it's just a few end-of-year adjustments to help close out.
Any other questions? I got a motion to approve, you have a second? You have a second? Lloyd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
B. ICIP, proposed list.
Chairman, the list you have in front of you will be the same list that we have distributed prior to that point, prior to this point. This, this is compiled by staff after Judy did a wonderful job of reaching out to the community and had five different hearings in the last two weeks and compiled all the comments from, from the different areas in Mountain County. And as you know, every year we have to, we have to update this. Used to be called a long time ago the five-year plan and now it's the ICIP. The important thing about an ICIP is at any time you're going to go ask for state funding, whether it's legislative funding, capital outlay, or any other grants and so on, they always want to make sure that, that it's in your ICIP project, that it's broken down in a five-year plan from 2016 to 2020, prioritized footing.
I see this on a number of occasions, we had to submit this and submit this to our wish list. So the wishes of this commission. You had a motion to approve? Chairman, you have a second? Lloyd? You have a span? You have a call there? Okay, C. Fiscal year fifteen, Wildlife Service work plan.
Mr. Chairman, I believe either John Grant or Philip Cooper?
Yes, I think.
It's here, Hopper. I apologize, it's here to make a presentation to you about the public service agreement or the five-year agreement.
All right, good evening. During fiscal year 2014, we, Wildlife Services helped protect livestock value of over four million in Sevola County.
Sorry, can you speak into the mic please?
Reported and verified livestock losses from coyotes totaled at 2,500. In the absence of predator damage management, research has shown predator losses for cattle would approximately be about three percent. Using this estimate, we believe we prevented approximately about forty-four thousand dollars worth of predation losses in Sevola County last year. We also helped provide other services, including rodent damage management. Wildlife Service helped protect alfalfa and pasture from damage caused by prey dogs and pocket gophers. Another component of our rodent damage management program is, is to assist the landowners in acquiring a private applicator's license through an NDA and sale. Deliver and demonstrate proper application, restricted use of rodent incides. Wildlife Service also collected samples from wildlife or disease surveillance, included plague and tuberculosis, and sends results to the New Mexico Department of Health. We also were involved in a Mexican program this year. We helped capture and monitor two global wolves that made their way up here and possibly have done some predation on, on landowners' land. Wildlife Service is requesting 21,500 for fiscal year 15. This is an increase of $500. Wildlife Service has not asked for an increase in cooperative fees in, in three years. This increase represents less than one percent per year for the last three years. These funds represent approximately 31% of the amount of fully funded, a full-time position, other cooperative fees, and USDA Wildlife Service funded the remaining, remaining 69%. USDA Wildlife Services works to help protect the economic stability and integrity of the local rural economies through our predator damage management and other activities. And we appreciate you guys for considering this request for 21,500. Any questions?
Now, this five-year plan, now, this is not going to tie our hands to that dollar amount every year for the next five years, is it?
I believe it, I believe it does for the next five years. At the, at the end of the five years, it'll.
I don't, we've never had a, we've never had a five-year agreement with you folks.
With us?
It's always been a year-to-year.
Year-to-year.
So this is totally new to me.
Okay.
Antonio, have you ever seen a five-year one?
Year-to-year.
It's usually a year-to-year. Usually what we have asked in the past, it's been like half a year, if they, in fact, we did it half, but where they actually.
But where they actually, I still have not seen one of you guys in my part of the county. Now, I don't know, because of land rent and the ranchers, I don't know, we have landowners here, out there, if the people that have livestock on their ranch, because I know we have some issues. And maybe it's just the lack of the people applying, because we had one guy who was, you know, about thirty-five head because of cats coming up on Taylor and down, and down into the rural bar.
I think you have to call them.
You gotta call you, don't you let you know that it's falling?
Yeah, yeah, you tell them if you have a situation, you just, just phone me and I'll get out there pretty promptly.
They brought in their own, their own trappers. They got a 265-pound cat last year.
Yeah, so this is a pretty outcome, and we're perfectly capable of dealing with an outline issue or any predation, really.
Have any problem with wolves, if you had to be called for any of those wolf stuffs around here?
I'm sorry, I hear you.
The wolf problem, like, how far do you guys go? You go to Catting County?
I, I go all the way to Catting County, yes, sir. And what, what happened this year was we had a bear moving north on us all the way to the Janet Craters Road, Alba Mount Island. And so, I monitored him for about two months before US Fish and Wildlife decided to make a move on him.
They grabbed him and go about...
Yeah, we assisted in the capture, and we wound up flying him in a helicopter, darting him and removing him and sending him, sending him back south to Catting County.
So, these are dumb ones because they couldn't read where they're at.
Those unfortunately, they don't pay no rate of having it, but...
You know, I'm a little taken back because of the presentation we just heard, or the comments we heard about US Forest Service looking to limit access to our forest lands for all our community residents. How does that want to impact the wildlife? It seems like there would be an increase on the number of wildlife that's gonna happen. So, what's your contingency plan? If we're gonna give you a five-year agreement and we see an influx of, because of this measure that they're trying to pass, what are you guys gonna do?
Well, we're currently working with the Forest Service, trying to get a plan set forth so we can access it and protect these, these landowners' properties and manage this information that's going on in the Forest Service. And to my knowledge, we'll just continue from doing that and try to keep a handle on these predators and protect them.
Game and Fish is doing, every time now, they can guarantee you, once in the morning, they catch a bear of the San Diego Heights, and you can sit outside my business and you watch a car, a truck go by, haul in a trailer, the bear taken into our community to drop it off. Trust me, I think it's like clockwork. Okay, and then Game and Fish takes it out there. And these are dumb ones too, because they don't realize they need to stay there at Game and Fish.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, I wish I could be more involved with some of Game and Fish's activities as far as moving predators and where do they get to move them to?
You know, Chairman, I think because of all these ramifications of the Forest Service, I think we need to go back to a year-to-year agreement, and maybe if we see no developments, we can go ahead and have an automatic clause in there that give renew for another year if there's no concern or instance that we give to you. Second, a motion. Got a motion, a second. How would you like to structure this, Chairman? Would you like to come back with another proposal and have a presentation back to us? Like to take a look at the one we had in the past? What we did in the past is we funded half of it, and then, after six months had gone by, we funded the balance of it. Is that right, is it what you're looking at?
No, I think that would...
It's worked in the past, you know, it's not that we're trying to kick you out the door, but, yeah, we...
Mr. Chairman, it'd be easier on our people, we're gonna pay anyway, just a bunch a year.
Mr. Chairman, if you... It's, it's set up, at least in the way it is here, it's set up on quarterly payments. They would, they would bill us and we would be merciful on the quarter. We could very easily put language in there that allows for a one-year term, to renew on four one-year terms upon mutual agreement of both parties. That'd be easy to do, but do you want to change from quarterly payments to, to...
By annual?
By annual, or...
We've never had a quarterly payment, it's always been by annual, by annual in the last three years anyway.
Yeah, actually, this last year, we paid quarterly.
We did.
Yeah, and I believe the year before as well.
Well, I, I, I stand for it. That's fine, that's indeed, if you was working for the county at the time, well, then I don't have a bond for the payment. But I have just one commission.
Yeah, and it's going up $500 more dollars from last year. I'm sorry. It's $500 more than it was last year.
Yeah. So, it'd be 21,500?
Yeah, 21,500.
Mr. Chairman, if it's your desire and the commission's desire, we could, you could adopt this contract with the amended changes. We could make those changes, have the chairman sign it, and send it back to USDA. If they didn't approve of it, they can certainly notify us. That way, it wouldn't be delayed a month and have to come back to you again.
I like that. Okay, is that, is that motion for right now? Yeah, and that's, okay, if that's what you're gonna do, okay, got a motion? Second, Walter, how do you go?
Yes.
Pat?
Yeah.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Antonio?
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you. Okay, Platts for approval. Now, the first one, on local ranch, that, the acreage, if I'm not mistaken, has not changed. And they went through the county, cross all, dotted all I's and crossed all the T's. And this has to do with the solar farm that's going in, maybe. It says restructure, reform, forming. I think it's a hundred and twenty-five acres on that. That, I'm aware of, I've been up to it.
And Mr. Chairman, as you say, the summary review is completed on July tenth. The five-year review has been completed, the pre-application meeting has been completed. Your approval then will allow the county manager to sign and approve it within forty-five days and after you've done that.
We had a feeling with all the, yes, our agenda here, that Judy, you didn't give us that.
And that is, that should be, she did not do it for this one, it starts at the, the next one, since this was a summary review. She has, she has put it in the...
This one was already mailed, they just restructured the acreage, okay? It's the same, same location, it's just they had to tweak bounty lines. Not changed, township, or anything else?
What was the reason for the change?
I, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure. Can P and M address why?
There was change, but it's not a resident, and not uses residential.
We got some...
The only change, yeah, a little change in acreage after certain...
A little change in acreage? How about the other ones, Chairman? I don't see a problem with that, but... Mark, I suppose, look how we can run these separate here.
Mr. Chairman, if you, if you wish to vote on together, that would be appropriate, that you could vote on the Platts as presented, on the four, on the summary of the Platts as presented. Get one vote in the second vote, just one time, instead of taking it all separately.
Point is, did you see, I saw the... Here's a checklist, too. And take this, or, yes, you know. No means... I make a motion. I have a... I have a motion. We got a motion, a second, Lloyd, how do you vote? We're willing to all vote. Yes. Walter?
Yes.
Antonio?
Yeah.
Yeah. The manager report did not, comments by the staff? Commission? The commissioners have any comments?
And I wanna say, we got a future commissioner over here, the audience there. Hi, Jack, are you on? Welcome.
Do I have a motion going to executive close session to deal personnel policies in section, section ten, that fifteen, one, H two, NMSA, nineteen seventy-eight compact?
Chairman, I'll go ahead and make the motion, but I also wanna make an announcement for the executive. Just for fellow commissioners' information, I just came back from the Northwest New Mexico Council of Governments annual meeting in Gala, and one of our own, Mr. Eddie Michael, presented with a, an award as a regional champ, part of the regional championship program. And this award was established as a tradition of recognizing citizens who best exemplify the commitment...
Commission, on the executive close session. So, no votes were taken? Second? Lloyd?
Yes.
Pat?
Yeah.
Walter?
Yes.
Paul?
All right. Consideration of management services. I wanna make a motion to, and we had a long discussion about the county manager position, close session, because of the fact that we do need someone to be here to handle to continue the operations. And I think Mr. Bob Gallagher has been doing a really outstanding job for us, and this is part of the main discussion for us. So, with that, I think I'd like to make a motion to offer a contract to Mr. Gallagher for, for, to act as the interim county manager for Sebelo County. But on, and because of the nature of the contract, we will go for one year, so we'll be paid on a monthly basis. Again, pending on our action to look and hopefully rule for an RFP, to look for a permanent manager for the county, and hopefully we can get that taken care of.
So, I got a motion.
Take consideration, the commissioners, new commissioners coming in.
We would invite everyone who's gonna say... Got a motion, do I have a second? Second?
Mr. Commissioner? Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I appreciate you for that, but I think in the motion, Commissioner Felipe, in the second, you would need to put a contract price on it, but you made the motion without price.
I made a motion without...
Without a, a contract amount, a monthly amount.
So, our discussion? Can monthly, that one is ten thousand? Ten thousand? Ten thousand one? It be without any benefits, you said, contract or contract? Okay, I see, I need a second. Walter?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Pat?
Yeah.
Antonio?
Yes.
Announcement, the next county commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen, at five thirty PM in Sebelo County Convention Conference, twenty-seven. Twenty-seven, I'm sorry. That being said, I have a motion to...